Being 7:00 PM on the nose, I'm going to call the meeting of the Wintering Town Council of January 21st, 2020 to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilor Flackatt, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remote call, please.
Present.
Councilor Ruggiero?
Present.
Councilor DeMarco?
Present.
Councilor Christopher?
Yeah.
Councilor Honan?
Here.
Councilor Firino?
Yeah.
Councilor LaConti?
Present.
Vice President Littieri?
Yeah.
President Boncori?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes of the January 7th, 2020 meeting has circulated.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilor DeMarco, seconded by Councilor Flackatt. Any discussion on the minutes? Anyone have any amendments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved.
One or six.
All right. Yes, okay. Councilor LaConti and Littieri are abstaining since they weren't here at the meeting. Okay, next we have public hearings. And the first public hearing that we're going to call is the continued one from the National Grid attachment and the relocation at Main Streets. Gentlemen, here from National Grid.
Yes, Extranet Systems, actually.
Okay, would you please identify yourself.
Keenan Brin, Extranet Systems. I'm actually with a company called Network Building and Consulting out of Chums for gas.
Okay.
By way of some background, I was here over a year ago and was permitted for a small cell on an existing pole at 1-49 Main Street for a small canister antenna and some related equipment on the pole. It was properly licensed and permitted by this board. The equipment sits on that pole today. Subsequently, it was determined that that pole was going to be a temporary pole and it was replaced, and the new pole cannot be used. So we're going to move down, and we're fully licensed for the pole about 100 feet north on 1.45, yeah, right in front of the Bell Isles Seafood Restaurant.
Okay.
Fast forward a year, I was here the other night to go through that process. And Mike Carney was here, and we had kind of missed each other, but he, I, we both agreed we should probably go out there and investigate it and kind of go through the project with him. So we continued the hearing until tonight. The following Monday that I was here, I met Mike out there. He had also invited Steve from DPW to come. We were going to try to go through the process and walk through the project. So we did that. Mike seemed fine with what we were planning to do, and he's actually anxious to get this moving ahead because that pole that Mike, client rests on right now, needs to be removed.
Okay.
So that's the first thing that needs to happen in order for Mike Carney to be able to bring his electrical service up that new pedestal. So he's anxious to see this move forward. I showed him the minutes that I was submitted, which were to move on to this other, on this other pole, which is the canister at the top and a small, kind of radio box about 12 or 15 feet up on the pole itself. So with that said, I had no objection from Mike, and he's anxious to see, you know, we move ahead with this. I'd like to see this happen as quickly as we could. What I would try to do is take the existing equipment, excuse me, put the new equipment on the available pole, and as soon as that's live and I get fiber to it, it might be like 30 to 45 days from the time I'm fully approved, then I could go back and remove my equipment from the other pole, and then Mr. Carney would be able to go ahead and continue with his work. So that's my goal tonight, is to try to get approval, basically to take that equipment, or similar equipment, moving on to the pole, which is closer to the telephone utility pole in front of the Bell Isles Seafood. And again, I could go over the plan with you, which is essentially what's up there right now. I can't be any more specific than what you've seen. That pole is slated to come down, and the next step is to try to get my equipment off. You know, I expected this, the actual installation will probably take, you know, half a day to get the equipment off and another day maybe to get the equipment on and basically energized with the help of National Grid. So the only other comment I would have maybe would be to see if the DPW has any comment on the actual...
I just got one question, two questions, actually. Is any estimation involved? Is all overhead?
It's all overhead. It's all aerial, so if you had like a decorative pole, there would be a situation where you may have to bring, you know, fiber in. But my understanding is coming overhead from, I think, ATT is the provider.
Did you hold your plan on going on to currently houses a camera?
Yes, for the police department.
Have you spoke to the police department about any concerns about interference or anything to that?
I haven't, only because it's... I'm a licensee, just like they are on the pole, where I would, you know, I'd make an application to National Grid, and they would approve me to go on that pole, that particular location.
And they've done that?
And they would have gone through that exercise.
Have they?
I don't know that.
So you don't know if they're going to allow you on that pole yet?
Oh, yeah, we've been licensed on that pole.
Oh, okay.
And if you want to subject, I don't have the document handy, because I know we just tried to push this through, but we could certainly subject any approval to a fully licensed pole attachment from National Grid.
My understanding is, I just know if there's...
Understandable.
Probably was a conversation.
Yeah. I'm happy to do the outreach, but I, as far as what goes on the pole and where we're located, that's National Grid, the final say. So that's kind of where I stand with that. If there were to be any interference, our actual antennas at the top of the pole, they're actually down, you know, closer to the, I think, the 12 or 15-foot level.
And our cameras are where on the pole, Steve?
Somewhere in that, like...
Yeah, deep water range.
Yeah. So it's a 33-foot pole, and they're probably in that...
How far up is the way up?
Yeah.
Okay, and you won't be close to them?
Well, we're not going to be like next to them. You know, we'll be up at the very top of the pole.
Okay. I know we've obviously diagrams, and you have a package of all the information that will be made part of the minutes tonight. Does anyone in the public have any questions or want to be heard on this public hearing? Do any councils have any questions for this gentleman?
Yeah, I do. There's two poles there. One is closer to Woodside Hardware, and one is closer to the inlet.
To the where?
The inlet.
Inlet, yes.
The water. You're moving to the, towards the inlet.
Towards the inlet, correct.
Yeah. That's a very crowded pole already.
Yeah.
And it's not as tall as the other pole.
Right. I can get into the specifics a lot. So the pole that we're on now, the shorter one, that's coming down, so it's effectively a temporary pole.
Oh, I see.
We didn't know that, and we originally leased and licensed it, so that's going away. And the other one carries what they call primary electric on it, so they don't allow that. So the primary electric is actually the actual electric transmission, and you'll see those wires at the top of the pole. So that one's not available, so we're basically kind of forced on to the other pole.
Any other questions from the council? Entertained a motion to approve the petition.
I'll second it.
Huh?
I'll second it.
All right. Motion's been made by Christopher, Councilor Christopher. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilor Firino. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'll do that with the next. The next public hearing, I did it now so that you can leave if you'd like. Okay. The next public hearing is for the town council to appropriate $1,265,000 as a portion of a final judgment in the case of Wintrop. How worse is the town of Wintrop? Do you want to...
Sure, we did have a... You could open a public hearing. Is it a public hearing?
This, the public hearing is now open on that issue.
We did have a finance committee meeting this evening, and this was on the agenda. This is a huge part of the town's portion of this settlement. We had discussions on how funds would be dispersed, where the funds would be allocated from. After much discussion, there was discussion as to whether or not to take some or all from capital reserves, or to take some or all from borrowing. Looking at the pluses and minuses of both, they were both very difficult decisions. The concern with taking money out of reserves potentially has a long and lasting effect on a bond rating for a town, and if the town's going out to do any borrowing over the foreseeable future, it could have a huge impact, as we saw with the middle high school, because we had been in a position over a number of years to build reserves to a good point and garner a relatively good bond rating. We were able to save almost $8 million over the life of the borrowing for the middle high school. So we really feel that to keep reserves at a relatively healthy level is important. However, this money, if bonded, is going to come out of the general fund, the operating budget on a yearly basis for the next five to 10 years, depending on the length of borrowing. After much discussion and much back and forth, we came out with a recommendation to authorize the town manager to bond the $1.265 million over a period of 10 years. That effect on the operating budget will range from roughly $178,000 over the first year, down to roughly $140,000 over the 10th year. So it does have a significant impact on the budget, but it's, we don't have much of a choice, as far as I'm concerned.
And it's workable. Okay, before opening public comment, I'm going to open the public hearing on the second part of it, because it's basically the same issue. And the second part of it is the town council appropriate $325,000 from the FB Reserve Overlay Surplus Account General Fund, special article, a physical year, 20 legal judgment settlement, and that is another part of the same settlement, so we want to...
It is another part of the same settlement. A small portion of a settlement had to, by ruling, is paid in a different form, and so a part of that, we decided, would come out of the overlay surplus. The overlay surplus is, this does not wipe out the overlay account. It wipes out this portion of the account, which we had previously authorized to put into a special account for this purpose. So this is just a part of the 1.6 million of the town's obligation. So this is just breaking it up in a smaller piece. So this is $325,000 that would come from the overlay fund, and then the remainder of the 1.6...
1.2.
1.265 would come from bonding. So after discussion, it was approved unanimously with a positive recommendation from the finance committee.
Okay. Is there any comment from the public?
I just have a question.
Would you identify yourself, so we can stand up, please?
Ms. Anne Swobbs, sorry. I have a question. Is that the only legal settlement that we are currently responsible for?
That we are currently responsible for, yes.
Okay, so and the total cost that we're currently responsible for is again, what, 1.?
I, the town's portion is roughly $1.6 million.
Okay.
A tad under.
All other payments we made by insurance companies and any other cases that are going on at the same time? Okay. Any other public comment?
Yeah, so...
Identify yourself.
Nick Seales, Precinct 5. I just need a little clarification. We're putting out 1.6, $1,600,000, and we only have seven citizens here tonight. That's a lot of money. Is that coming out of taxpayers' money? I just like to know. Directly out of taxpayers' money?
It will be bonded, and the amount we pay every year will be taken from taxpayers' rolls, the money that comes in.
Okay, that's the way I understood it. My second question is, are there any other, Ms. Swobbs' question, are there any other lawsuits pending against the town at this moment? Or are there any that you are anticipating?
Listen.
There are items that have been brought up to DLR, Department of Labor Relations. There are no other lawsuits, though, than that. We have things that are at the Department of Labor Relations and those types of things, but no, nothing to the point that we would be surprised at the amount of a judgment in some other fashion to this.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public questions? Count councils have any questions? Anyone have any questions on the council? Hearing none, I will close the public hearings on both those issues. And I will open up the floor to public comment on any issues that pertain to the agenda in the town.
Peter Gil, Precinct 5.
What'd you say his name was?
Peter Gil, G.I.L.L. My concern is the middle school development and plans for that. I remember when you guys were doing the centimeter districts, and you considered putting the middle school property in. I want to commend you, Mr. President, that you have identified this as a top priority that's been going on for a long time. There's been a lot of people work on it. There was the, a special committee, the Middle School Redevelopment Committee, was appointed in 97, and I believe they had three meetings. EDCAC was appointed and had some... Specifically, I just want to read a petition that I had sent to you guys at the previous meeting. And I'd like to just have you guys keep this in mind as you go through with the process. This was signed by about 80 Wintrop citizens, citizens of Wintrop, requesting that with the planning board recommendations that the town council, that this time, not a center business district should not include places you want the middle school and the adjacent parcels. Prior to any change in the zoning, there should be public notice, public hearings with the planning board and the town hall, and the town council should... And I know you had a meeting last night, it was the joint meeting of rules and ordinances and development. There were no conclusions made, but I could just hope that we don't get into the situation like we get into many years with the hospitals, and more recently with other developments with nursing homes and so forth. So I hope that the, I know, I put my faith in the fact that the council will keep this an open process. We don't want to be like, most recently, we're down the center where people said they'd never heard of this stuff and so forth and so on. There's been a ton of meetings on this, but not everybody knew about it. So again, I ask you to not include, although it was suggested that it could be a modified, that was a connected plan, modified center business district. Something has to be done there, obviously, and I hope it moves along quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate you keeping your introductions, your remarks to two minutes instead of the three. You saved a whole minute.
Fine. It's fine.
Wait, the rules...
The rules changed?
We changed.
Again, would you please identify yourself?
I have a question. I received a notification from the town of Wintrop about the water situation, that two out of 15 homes that they tested were, had lead in them. And I'm wondering, I know in some homes, the pipes are very old, et cetera, in the homes, but what portion of the problem do you think is still within the pipes in the town that then are then distributed to homes? And what portion are the individual homes responsible, do you think, for the lead in the water?
I think Steve could answer that.
So unfortunately, the letter is a little bit deceiving. It's a DEP mandated form letter. What we do is, twice a year, they have all municipalities do lead and copper sampling. Wintrop has 15 sample sites. The sample sites that we're sampling are tier-one sites. They're full-led service lines. So in essence, we're sampling places that we suspect high levels of lead. The letter comes across that there's lead out in the system.
Yes.
And it's really not that way. And I've had this discussion with DEP. It's all isolated to the service lines from the mains to the property. The town owns a portion of, there's no, we don't get lead from NWRA's water. That all comes in lead-free. We don't have lead within our water mains. It's the service line, which is the pipe that connects the water main to the actual home. Town's responsible for the, from the main to the property line. The homeowners are responsible from their property line to the arena.
Correct.
So we have, we've known, 800 known, a little under 800, well, 776 known full-led service lines still in town. There's 45, almost 4,600 services. So it's a small percentage of full-led lines that are still out there. There's a lot of still partial services, but again, the town has replaced the majority of the portions of the services that they own. What we're sampling is known sites that are full-led, considered tier-one site from the main to the arena. The program that we're using through NWRA to get the remaining lead services out of our system is a zero-interest, 10-year program. DEP has mandated that we remove 7% of the remaining lead services until they're done. So we have about another eight or nine years of these projects to remove 81 services a year, you know, to get to that mandated level. But the way the DEP requires us to notify, you know, they want a full-town, you know, letters to go out to every consumer, which is understandable, but it's not that everybody, the letter comes across that everybody has lead in their water. And it's, again, it's, we're looking at specific tier-one sites with the sample.
Can we be assured that none of the schools have lead in their water?
None of the new schools have lead in their water.
I mean, none of the schools.
DEP Newton still has some old fixtures within that school, within that old building, the Dunn's House, some educational, but all the drinking faucets to have sample hide have been shut off at this point. Again, even if you have a full copper service at your home, if you have lead fixtures or SODA, you know, old SODA still from the years that lead was allowed to be in SODA, you could still have this situation. So it doesn't hurt to sample your water, but again, we're looking at tier-one sites. That's what DEP is mandating us to do. Apologize for the confusion on the letter, but it's a form letter that they do require we put out.
Mr. President, if I may. Steve, just to be clear, so the Ford Bank School, the Cummings School, the middle school, and the high school, no lead?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Nick again.
Nick Seales, Precinct 5. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you, going with the presidency, congratulations, and all the other new councils. I wish you the best, because I've been coming to these meetings for three years, and I'm very concerned about the direction of the town, financial direction, I'm extremely concerned about. I'm also concerned about the character changes that could take place down the center. I want to quickly give the new councils a quick history of what's been going on here. Many times in the last three years, we've got 30, 35 residents from St. Andrew Street here. In 2005, there was an EPA report, signed on with the town, big thick booklet, that said, this is 15 years ago, that Wintrop, with the addition of 93 more units and 193 people, is built out. That's an EPA report, that we are built out. That was 15 years ago. Fast forward to 2014, you've all heard what had happened down Wintrop Center here. In 2014, every single ordinance was changed without any resident, constituent, or butler, or citizen involved in the changes. They were drastic, impactful changes. The height went from two and a half stories to four stories. The parking went from two stories, I mean, two cars per unit, to three quarters of a car. There's nobody that has three quarters of a car. There is right now still in the books, despite numerous, numerous citizens saying, how can it develop a high, buy a public spot for $2,000? That's unheard of, unheard of. That council, whoever was involved with that decision, put every single citizen and people down the center especially, in checkmate. Checkmate, the game's over. They changed the laws permanently, and they knew it. And we were coming to these meetings, meeting after meeting after meeting. We presented a neighborhood petition. We contacted every one of our, every counselor. Our voices were not heard. There was an election that took place, and Ron Vecchia won by 11 votes. It proved every vote in this town counted. Ron Vecchia had a forum on April 1st, 2018. The majority of the people were concerned about the finances and all the money going down the center. That project jumped from $2 million to $14 million. We have nine single-family homes that are running down on Somerset Avenue, Curtis Park Road. It's the most congested part of town, and right now, we're looking at a potential 100 units going down Wintrop Center, underneath the river. Everybody's extremely upset. There was no trust, there was no transparency, and unfortunately, Mr. Gil said the right thing tonight, when he said he doesn't want to see this happen again. But it's happened to us. I am very concerned. On August 27th, 2018, Mr. Riley, who wrote the charter, presented the council with a repeal.
Nick, would you try to close up?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to do two seconds. Okay? And I'm representing a lot of people, not just myself. May 27th, 2018, Mr. Riley presented this council with a repeal of many of those ordinances. The charter states, within 30 to 90 days, it has to be addressed. So that means, May 27th to August 27th, something had to be done. Yes, no, but something had to be done, Mr. Riley said at numerous times. Nothing was done. Nothing. You went against your own charter. Fast forward to 2019, January, I'm going to finish. 2019, January, that repeal gets tabled indefinitely. Wrong, wrong, wrong. In order for this town to succeed, we all need, we all know we need some developments, but we don't need massive buildings. You are changing the character of the town. You are changing the jewel and the charm of the town. I will finish up with this statement right now. Down that center, 17.5 of your charter says that whatever's done down there has to remain in the character of the center. I'm sorry, but you are, that CPD is now becoming a residential district. It has nothing to do with the businesses, which were stated by many people here. And my last thing I want to say is, we have one of the most renowned architects in the country in Frank Contatino, who put French Square there, and we're going to destroy that beautiful piece of art. Hopefully, people can converse with the council, and I want to finish with one last thought. Mr. Rodriguez was supposed to be working with us. It's on tape. Everything that's done here is videotaped. Mr. Rodriguez said he was going to work with the people down the center, talk to the constituents, talk about the ordinances. Nothing was done the last five months, nothing.
Nick, that's all in the past. It's all in the past.
No, no. It's the past, but it affects the present. Okay? If you don't understand the past, it affects the present, okay? And I'm worried about the finances of this town. We can't even pay our teachers a decent salary, but we're going to put millions of dollars into one area of the town. People down Moon Street were flooded up. People on Pico Avenue down there, the water was coming over the walls, okay? We're just focused on this. Why are we so focused on this? Why are we focused on the most congested part of the town? I just behoove you. Thank you for your time. Sorry it went over.
Okay. At the end of the meeting, you'll have another three minutes. Keep it to three minutes, please.
Okay.
All right, anybody else with public comment? Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on. There's no correspondence that I'm aware of at this present time, and we'll move over to committee reports. And I have a report from first, the Rules and Ordinances Committee, and then the Joint Committee, and then the Finance Committee.
Sure, so the Rules and Ordinances meeting, this was the first Rules and Ordinances meeting ever held that was not chaired by Councilor Boncori. And I think it went pretty well. It lasted about five minutes, and we went over a state law that requires municipalities to designate early voting sites across the, across the state. So in Wintrop, we've chosen Town Hall as our early voting site the past few elections, and we thought that it has run pretty smoothly up there, and we decided unanimously to make, to make Town Hall our early voting site. So it will be from February, I think, 20...
24.
24 through the 28th, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So February 24th to the 28th, you can go to Town Hall and you can cast your votes early for the presidential primary election.
Okay, who's going to do it? The Joint Committee?
Going to do it now?
I'll do it now. All right. Um, so this is a report from the Joint Meeting of the Economic Development and Rules and Ordinances Committees. Both committees met last night to renew the discussion of the development of the middle school site. There was a good turnout with many informed citizens interested in providing their expertise to help in this effort. Um, the Joint Committees realized that there is much more research needed on their behalf, specifically in regard to the exact site boundaries, as well as the history of previous work which, which has been conducted, so as not to repeat that work, which has already taken place. The Joint Committee will request information from the town manager regarding site boundaries, and will work to create an accurate visual map and a written description of the parcel in question. New potential zoning will also be examined for the site, as the SDOD was not seen as ideal, um, because the building, um, under the SDOD could not be, um, demolished, that, that was our understanding. Um, finally, as a Joint Committee, and I want to be very clear about this, uh, we agreed that the skating rink should not be omitted from these preliminary discussions. By no means is it the intention of the Joint Committees to eliminate the rink, but rather to determine if any new development might include improvement to the existing rink or the erection of a new rink facility. Thank you.
All right, and Finance Committee?
Finance, uh, met earlier this evening, as we discussed in the public hearings, we had two items on the agenda, they both concern, uh, funding of the settlement, uh, both will come before us in all business with positive recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Tom, in?
Also, the Millerfield Committee met, uh, last week, and, uh, everything is going according to plan right now. The vocational school students have been tremendous, uh, they're taking on a, a little more responsibility now. We are just finishing the concrete floors, I believe, in the, inside, and then they will put the bathroom partitions up, a little bit of work outside, some windows. Um, we are, we have planned an April second dedication, which would be right before, I believe, the first lacrosse game, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I think it's the first boys' lacrosse game, um, but that is the plan as of now, everything else is going well, and it is on, under budget.
Fantastic. Okay, any other committees that met, I don't think there was? Okay, then we will move to the town manager's report.
Um, did everyone get the memorandum that I, uh, wrote to Ms. Chavis?
Yeah.
Did you keep passing it down? Or did that stop with Rob? Rob's got it. Nope, that's the fund balance, there's, there's two items on it. Where did I die over there? It's in someone's papers, I'm sorry. Or, yeah, that's it. Keep passing it down, Phil. Thank you. It's okay.
It's okay.
It's okay. It's okay.
It's okay.
So, three items that I touched on, um, were three items that, uh, Ms. Chavis had brought up in our last council meeting. Um, first was concerning the ferry, um, on the attached page is the summary of the revenue and expenses to date in this fiscal year. Um, we have continued discussions with Quincy, um, about their potential funding, um, in lieu of MBTA funding, uh, available for the, for the project, and, um, we are, um, in discussions about setting up the payment from DEP, um, as well. So, no issues to speak of in the ferry operations right this second. Um, the second item, about the public safety building feasibility study, um, that is being done, um, by Kessel and Boos, uh, engineering, our architecture firm, along with our public safety chiefs, uh, they have gone through, uh, a bunch of different sites in town, um, they're trying to spec up ideas, um, of locations that would be feasible for all of the, uh, necessary machinations of a combined public safety building. Um, I don't have that report yet, so I do not feel comfortable expanding beyond the fact that this will be a presumable fifty-million-dollar building, um, at the very least, um, and the town looks to, seems to be in the position that we have about ten million covered by the states, um, but in any regard, we're going to, uh, potentially explore debt exclusion if deemed necessary, and this is a project that the town, um, is willing to pursue. Um, and the third item concerning, um, that one-point-five-million dollars in the school department, Anna Friedman, the CFO, along with Lisa Howard, the superintendent, have been in contact with bond counsel concerning this funding. Anna Friedman is actually, um, out with the flu, unfortunately, and was unable to, um, finish her report about the one-point-five-million dollars, but a memorandum is forthcoming that will be able to detail, um, potential uses of that one-point-five-million dollars. There's a pretty, um, uh, there's some specific items that it can be used on. So, that will be forthcoming, and I didn't want to step in front of that, but it is, um, a long process that's been in place with it, and they are trying to tie that up, um, to give, um, people an authority, the ability to move money accordingly. Um, otherwise, um, that is all that I have, unless there are other items that, uh, the council wanted me to cover.
Okay, is that the entire report?
Yes. And the additional memos will be forthcoming, and I will share them with you, um, as soon as we have them available.
Okay. And as part of the coming report, there, there was a meeting today with all the department heads, uh, which is done, I guess, on a weekly basis, but I was able to attend it today, and it was quite, you know, uh, an experience to meet with all the department heads, and congratulate them for the work they are doing, and I think they're all doing a great job, and, uh, I look forward to working with all of those department heads over the next two years. And also, thank you for inviting me to the meeting.
It's not a problem, I put it up as a vote to my department heads to determine if we were going to invite you, so we were very happy to have you.
All right. School department update, and fortunately, I have not been to a school department meeting yet, my first meeting will be Monday night, but we have a member of the school committee here, so I'm gonna ask her to give us a little bit of an update as to what's been going on. Susan, can you tell us what's going on?
Well, we just, um, we've been in teacher negoti, been in teacher negotiations for a while, and, um, hopefully, we will come to a successful conclusion, um, in that regard. And, um, so we'll see how that goes.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm delighted about that, and, uh, that's taken up some time. We, uh, you know, it just, just doesn't, as a matter of course, it's, the school committee has worked so well with the superintendent, I really, really pleased about that relationship. And I'm hoping too, that the teachers feel good about what's going on in the schools. It's, it's, as you know, one kind of a tough road out there, but I think we find many of the, of the kids, we see a growing number of students who need special assistance. And that, of course, as you know, is, is, it's, it's our responsibility, we hope that that goes well, it's also expensive. So, that's, that's eats up some of our budget, and we, then we have to be cognizant of that responsibility, and it's, it's extremely important, because it affects everybody in the classroom, not just the students who need special help, but the students who are sitting there that don't need special help in that regard. So, that's, that's some of the things that we've been talking about. Also, I think that, um, we look forward to seeing a playground at, uh, at the Cummings soon, maybe in the spring, that would be nice. And it's, uh, it's, it's, I think, been a good year for the school committee, and I think it's been a good year for the schools. The report that the principals gave, uh, in last, in a few months ago, was encouraging, but we have a ways to go when it comes to the quality of our education, and hopefully, our test scores will continue to improve, students will continue to learn, and, uh, we'll be happy campers, we'll be glad that, when negotiations are over. I think that always helps the spirit of the whole schools when that is finished. Now, we'll be into other negotiations.
And I heard a rumor that the negotiations are very close, if not completed.
Yeah, we're...
An agreement, semi-agreement's been made, I believe.
I think that revocation is, as it was, is hopefully tonight, and then the school committee will hear what happens on that.
Right, that's great, and that's good news, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to all business, well, the first item on all business, we've already taken care of during the public hearing, so the gentleman could leave, but I'm gonna ask, uh, Finance Committee Chair and Vice, uh, President of the Council to, uh, bring forward the two motions he has.
Thank you, Council President. The first motion is that I move that the town council adopt the following order, that the town appropriates the sum of one million, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars to pay a portion of the final judgment against the town by the Superior Court in the matter of Raquel versus Town of Winthrop Civil Action Number fourteen-eighty-four, CB oh-three-two-hundred. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow set amount under the pursuant, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, Paragraph three, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore, that any premium received under the sale of the bonds or notes approved by this order, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of the cost approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, and that the treasurer is authorized to seek approval of the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to issue the bonds or notes authorized by this order for a period of time not to exceed ten years, again, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, Paragraph three. This came out with positive recommendation, and I would ask for a voice vote, and it would require a two-thirds positive vote by the full council.
Okay. I am, uh, motion has been made, and it doesn't need a second, because it's coming from committee, uh, and that motion is for a borrowing authorization, to borrow one million, two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars, so I would ask that we do it as a roll call vote rather than a voice vote, uh, and that hopefully, we have two-thirds of the council approving.
Councilor Gero?
Yes.
Councilor Flackhart?
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Honig?
Yes.
Councilor Frino?
Yes.
Councilor Conti?
Yes.
Vice President LaTieri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes, it's unanimous, and I thank the council for that.
The second motion is that the town coun, I move that the town council appropriate three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand from the fund balance reserved of overlay surplus account to fund general funds, Special Article Number zero-nine-one-six-zero-five-eight-dash-five-eight-eight-onexxxx, fiscal year twenty legal judgment settlement, or take any other action relative thereto. This also came out of committee with favorable recommendation, would require a voice, a voice vote, and we would like two-thirds.
Okay, again, uh, this is a, a motion to appropriate three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from our reserve overlay surplus, and I would ask again for a roll call vote.
Councilor Gero?
Yes.
Councilor Flackhart?
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Christopher?
Yes.
Councilor Honig?
Yes.
Councilor Frino?
Yes.
Vice President LaTieri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, again, it's unanimous. Uh, our next issue under the all business is to designate Town Hall as an early voting site, and I'm gonna, uh, call on Council Chairman of the Rules and Ordinances Committee to read the motion, please.
Sure.
Since it's coming out of your committee?
The Winthrop, uh, the, uh, motion coming out of committee is that the Winthrop Town Council, in accordance with nine-fifty CMI forty-seven point oh-four and nine-fifty CMI fifty-one, designates the town, Winthrop Town Hall as the early voting site for the town of Winthrop, for the time period runs from, that runs from February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, to February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty.
Okay, there's a motion that is coming out of committee, it doesn't need a second, uh, is there any discussion on that motion?
I, I would, I got a couple of questions. Uh, first off, what's the primary date?
The third.
It's the third. Was there any, uh, thought given, or any, did you look into maybe even extending it and maybe doing also February seventeenth through the twenty-first, to give two weeks for early voting?
It wasn't something that...
You said dates.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I believe the Secretary of State sets the dates that they have to be done, and, and we can't change that as a town.
Okay, all right.
And that came from the council, from our town clerk to the committee, so...
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Sounds like another unanimous vote. And they said it couldn't be done, Austin. Every vote so far has been unanimous. In two meetings.
Unit.
Okay, uh, the other thing on all business is the middle school zoning, and as you heard,
there was a, a joint committee hearing on it, that committee is, uh, gonna stay, uh, connected and having meetings until that is completed, and, uh, they've been asked to do it as quickly as possible, and, uh, there are four people in that committee that are doing research and pulling everything together, so that we should have an answer very soon, and hopefully, get some action in March. So, I want to commend that committee, because I attended their meeting, and, uh, you know, a lot of questions were asked, and they were concerned about it, and there's a lot of research that's already started, and getting, uh, the stuff pulled together, so that we can zone that, and that we can sell that piece of property and build something there. Okay, and the new business, I have...
I'd like to make a motion in regards to the middle school zoning.
Yes.
Um, and sort of piggybacking off of getting the ball rolling, like you said, and, um, also adding on to, um, Council Honig's, uh, presentation earlier, um, I'd like to make a motion to direct the town manager to define the boundaries of the middle school site to include the former middle school, the memorial auditorium and gymnasium, Larson Rink, and the surrounding areas, for example, the parking lots, in a way that would allow the council to make a zoning recommendation to the planning board. So, as you know, last night, one thing that came up, um, was the decision of which parcels we're talking about, um, the surrounding area, so in order for us to really get a start with our recommendation to the planning board, um, we're asking the town coun, excuse me, the town manager, um, help us to find these boundaries, to include those properties that we, um, described in the motion, so...
Okay, is that motion come out of committee, or is that a motion you're making that needs a second?
That's a motion that I'm making.
Okay, motion, uh, by Councilor Gero, seconded.
I'll second.
By Councilor Christopher, is there any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, question. Do we not have the bound, don't we have the boundaries? We just don't have some of the legal proceedings, but do we not have the boundaries?
We think we must.
Based off your RFI, it seems like you do not have the boundaries. Um, the last RFI that went out, um, there is a description of it, and there are maps concerning the site, but the quality of the maps is similar to the quality of the maps that came, um, involving the Center Business District as well, um, so I think it would behoove us to, um, you, uh, start this as the first step, with this, is clearly defining the boundaries, and, um, this, the, we are in a circumstance that we may be having to look for some outside help from a planning consultant or something like that, to help us with this process a little bit. Um, but, the definition of the site is not clear in the RFI. Um, I ju, I just printed it out today and went over it again. There's more than one definition in there, and in the initial introduction in the RFI, there is, uh, mention of the exclusion of the ice rink from anything there, and then on page six, I believe, there is a mention of, we're open to projects that would involve the ice rink as well. So, we want to make this as clear as possible to anyone that would want to do something with this, and any work that we're doing on this. If we're cutting out the rink, cut it out from the beginning, if you're including it, include it from the beginning, um, and get this site, we have the addresses of it, but we should, this falls in the same places, is it a two thousand and six map, I think? Uh, this is like a two thousand and six map issue, um, that came up previously and is coming up again. Um, so, getting it totally settled on a map is, I believe, the first step that would be necessary for this committee, um, and that's something that we can work on in due time.
And, and it's something that this council can do, no matter what the issue is, because I believe we have all the deeds, we have all the former maps, it's just, uh, putting them all together, presenting it to this council, and this council can decide on the actual boundary. Yep, so, uh, that, that's my discussion on the motion, I probably should pass the gavel since I spoke.
Well, I have one question before you pass the gavel. So, yeah, if there's a cost involved in everything, anything that we do, uh, what's the potential cost, and where's the money coming?
Um, you know, I think this would be a cost that would potentially come from Town Council Reserve, and I have to, it, this was just brought to my attention earlier today, about exploring, um, this in this nature, um, so...
So, if this is the intent of the next step, then I will explore costing out what this would look like and not commit to anything until I have...
And that's my only concern is that we've come to this process before and then we had a bill that we approved the process but never approved the amount. I would like, before I felt comfortable voting, I would like to know what, how much it would cost, who would be doing it and where the funds would be coming from.
That's, the MMA conference is on Friday and that was actually one of the things I was going to spend my time doing is researching planning consulting firms there. I do have some people that I can reach out about it and even some people that may want to help us out with some side work. So, I'm going to try to get this done for the cheapest amount possible because this is one step of maybe that we need in this process, unfortunately.
So, I would use my council privilege to put this off till the next meeting so we would have more information on it.
Okay. Council has put it off till the next meeting and let's have the information ready for the next meeting. This motion will be carried forward to the next meeting. Hopefully, we'll be ready to go with that meeting because I don't want this project delayed whatsoever. I want this project done as soon as possible. Okay. All right. I have one other item, which is an appointment under new business. And my appointment is to appoint Linda Cronin of Somerset Avenue to the council on aging. Everybody has seen her resume. It's included in the package. Someone make a motion to accept my appointment.
Make a motion.
Motion been made by Council DeMarco to approve the appointment of Linda Cronin to the council on aging, seconded by Council Lattieri. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Another unanimous vote. Fantastic. This council is unified. All right? We're going to reopen to, we're going to reopen to public comment. Any further public comment? Anyone have anything to say? Nick, three minutes.
First of all, I think that three minutes should be five minutes. It's been five minutes forever. I don't know why you limited it to three minutes. It should be five minutes. People wait here a long time, they come to meetings, most of the time they get done fast. I usually get done fast. Tonight, I'm talking for my whole neighborhood. I want the councilists that I really elected to know that from day one, the CBD, there's been nothing but rebellion. They shut down Hagman Road, which was supposed to be shut down for 64 days. They put picnic tables in the middle of the street. Forty-two days later, the pressure of the public, because everybody was here, held Hagman Road. They wanted to make Adams Street two ways, another one way that's been for many, many years. They realized there was a mistake there as well. Council Christopher has testified that he cannot even park on his own street, called his Park Road, because you can only park on one side of the street. So, he has to park on Somerset F. Same problem on the road, same problem on Woodside Avenue. How are we going to survive as taxpayers? Do you know this impact is going to be very, very difficult? Mr. Rodriguez said that at the previous meeting at the Leo Center. I don't think anybody's really thinking ahead with this construction. I think we have to take, be within our means, with our budget, just like we do in our homes. And I think we have to take it very, very, very slow. The impact is going to be devastating on those center residents. And we don't know what's going to happen once we turn that soil and we go underneath the ground, okay? The other thing is that a lot of this is coming from the taxpayers. You have developers coming to town. Why isn't there mitigation going on? Why, why, why are taxpayers paying for all those pipes? I'm very concerned about what is happening down there. And it just seems that we were left out of the process. And we've said this time and time again. Everybody knows that, okay? There are serious deficiencies and serious mistakes that were made. It's in the transcript where Mr. Sanford took over as president. He said there were serious mistakes made. You had a council at that time that had councillors that were on there for 11 years. These people were on there 11 years. They weren't new councillors like yourselves. An 11-year councillor knows, the first thing you do before you change ordinances is you talk to your constituents, you talk to your neighbors, you talk to the residents. You are changing the character of the entire center, that beautiful center that we had just had lit up for Christmas. I'm talking for my entire neighborhood and people who've been here 50, 60 years. Please, 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 consider the quality of life impact this is going to have on the entire town. You're talking about 30 to 100 units in a congested area. There's no logic here. We have 11,000 cars in town. We're the most densely populated town in the state of Massachusetts and now we're going to throw hundreds of units in here?
Thank you.
It's not logical. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Man? Just the previous town council changed that rule back at the beginning of that council two years ago from five to three. And council, our new councillor who's in charge of rules and ordinance laid out all the rules that the council's going to follow, that this council's going to follow at the last meeting.
Yeah. Mr. Seotis, I'd just like to apologize to you because earlier I made a comment joking around about the minutes where I think you were like, it was five minutes and, you know, I'm like, we changed it, you know, I was just being sarcastic. But I just want to apologize to you because, you know, you're getting up there and you're speaking your mind and I didn't realize, you know, just, I apologize for saying a sarcastic remark like that.
Like I said, I'm not just talking for myself. I'm talking and I'm trying to articulate the pulse of Winter of Center and its residents and the neighbors. That's all.
That's all. I just wanted to apologize for making a joke like that.
Any other public comment?
And Council, comment?
I just want to reiterate that we didn't make any changes to the rules that was five from three. That had been a longstanding rule. And also, anybody on the council is permitted to give somebody time to a member of the community if they still want to talk. In regards to the construction process, we had meetings on this that was attended by, you know, people in the community for six months of, I think, this time last year that we were going through. We were going through phasing. We were making sure that there was inclusion with the business community down the center and, you know, across the boards. We did more than, I think, what most communities would do when they were going into a period like this. We had contingencies that was attached to the financing plan that we needed to meet in order to move forward. So, I think the process up until now has definitely been inclusive of individuals in the community. Moving forward, just because Dave Rodriguez is no longer with the town, that does not lessen, you know, in my opinion, the town's commitment to making sure that we're working with businesses throughout this process because it is, like you said, going to be a tough time on many people down the center. I know I'm committed to making sure that we're communicating as well to make this as seamless as possible and also working to maybe even try to add some vibrancy to the, to the businesses that are down there as well. So, just because he's not here right now, I can say that, at least from my perspective, and I'm sure Austin would agree with me, that that's something that we're definitely prioritizing, not just with businesses but with people in the neighborhood as well.
Absolutely. We literally just, I've brought up with Steve today about the phase of plan and getting that out publicly. This is not something that's falling by the wayside by any means.
I just have one comment, just piggyback on Peter and Mr. Seotis also, just that I think there have been a lot of meetings that a lot of people attended and have a pretty good idea, but I don't think the general public has a good idea. I don't, I don't really have a good idea of how it's going to be phased in. If we could have some sort of update maybe in a couple of meetings as a phasing process, the best we know, idea when it's going to start, how it's going to be phased in, which streets are going to be done and which order and how it's going to affect timing and all that stuff.
Absolutely.
And I think there should be discussion with business owners about deliveries and trash pickup and everything else and how that's going to be, because there has been no conversations as to that with the owners.
There have not. There haven't even been internally. So, we are exploring all of those items and we will have that information available, I would say, in the month of February and we'll have it.
Because we are...
And we'll have a website specifically dedicated to it. We will try to make it as easily digestible as possible. If I can get into the point of trying to update things on a weekly basis, that's what I would like to do. And I would like the website to be relatively dynamic and easy for us to change so that if things change in the project, we can change them and let the public know about it as quickly as possible. I know meetings get tight during the summer. There is July and August where we may have two or three meetings, but that's still on the town to get this information out there. So, we, our external communications are a priority of my office to kind of get wrangled and this is a key item that I think we can show that we're trying to take a different attitude in terms of public communication.
I believe the contractor is prepared to start as soon as the weather breaks and he can get into the ground. Is that correct, Steve?
That is correct. We'll also have construction administration. We'll have a resident engineer on site. Obviously, I'll be around daily as well, my operations manager. So, there'll be a presence down there and we certainly will communicate each phase.
And we can, we can even look at interesting things of putting in specific tickets and see click fix that could be available to people if they want to send things in to us. There's different ways we can approach this so that, one, everyone can be well informed beforehand, but if there are issues that pop up, we're going to make it as easy as possible for people to report those issues and try to attend to them.
Great. Thank you. Any other councillor have anything to say under public comment? Hearing none, we'll end that. And under public relations, the Chamber of Commerce Community Awards Dinner is coming up. I think it's the Saturday, January 25th at 7:00 PM at the Cottage Park Yacht Club. And that's the only public service announcement I have. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion been made by Vice President Lattieri, seconded by Robert, Council DeMarco. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Another unanimous vote.